Item number seven. Considering take action to establish positions for courthouse security to be funded out of the courthouse security funds pursuant to Article 102.017 Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. And I believe the, I believe the treasurer has identified to the penny the money as of the end of July that should be in the courthouse fund, the portion of it that mistakenly was put in the JP courthouse security.
And here.
Yeah, there you go.
We've got one more chair up here close by. But at either end of the table.
I'm not the only one.
Yeah, we can't, we can't sit in this lot.
You're not talking loud enough.
And what we're looking at-
This is not in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. It should be honorable to all-
Sir, you're out of order.
You're not in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Do you agree with me?
Sir, you're out of order.
Do you agree with me?
You're out of order.
Simple question. We've gone through this over and over.
Sir, you're out of order. I didn't hear you.
That's enough.
Okay. The item has come up before to try to preserve the security of courthouse doors. And yet, we want to do that without increasing our budget, salary budget for the sheriff's department. So there is a courthouse security fund that is specifically set up for this purpose among others. And Sheriff, it's your desire to restore the two employees back at the courthouse security, at the courthouse door?
It's actually my desire, sir, to have Tracy, who works there, who is unarmed, be hired out of courthouse security fund to monitor the cameras, and two armed deputies to work the front door and control inside and outside the courthouse to ensure safety assistance to employees.
We have previously approved Tracy to work to monitor when they're moved back to the sheriff's office. So that does not make you here.
If I could, could I address that issue though?
Yes.
I've been told that she's only been approved until the last day of September. So not knowing whether or not she's going to be carried on throughout the next year and deployed, I had to spend $3,000 to move camera equipment that may not have anybody back there to watch it. So I'd like to know if we're going to be able to continue her employment. I think there's, from what I've been told, is roughly $300,000 now in the courthouse security fund, once it gets moved from where it was inadvertently placed in the JP fund. I don't know the exact figure. Do we know the exact figure?
It is over $300,000.
I feel like with that, with that amount of money, there is money there to highly position. If I could, I'd like to give a little bit of history on courthouse security. May I do that?
Yes.
When I took office, 2001, James, where I had the U.S. Marshal come give a courthouse survey for me. One of the things that he recommended was having security around the courthouse. Okay? It took a while. September 11th, 2001, when New York was hit, that day, we was able to get security overnight. I went to Lowe's, I bought plastic rope, PVC pipe, made Barrett who put a metal detector in the front door of the courthouse. We didn't get permission approval to my knowledge. It happened overnight. The deputies were, come in, they were paid time and a half for years. All deputy deputies would get time and a half to work the front door of the courthouse. Okay? Paid far out of courthouse security money, to my knowledge. I asked Mr. Ty, and he worked on that for me to find out exactly when, if it got even taken from courthouse security. It may be even from my understanding being taken out of courthouse security now and being placed into the budget, I don't know. I'm not sure, are we?
I know in the past, we did pay the overtime out of the courthouse security fund.
Okay. And that was for many years. Why do I think it's so important? I can remember as an investigator here, we had a mental drains person come into the county first office and threatened to shoot her buddy in there. I had to arrest that person. We've had a man commit suicide in the back parking lot here. We all know Sherri Jones was killed in the basement. Anything could happen in this courthouse, anything. The judge will agree, I believe, that it's not the murder trial where the guy in custody is going to be as big a deal as that man and woman who are getting divorced and one of the others losing their children or their property could really have a temper start flaring because of something that's personally happened to them right then. Or it could even be a person mad about taxes, to me, anybody. I feel like, looking at here, this is good for the courtrooms. In a way, it also may could be a fire hazard. If that court, if this hallway gets full and people have to get out of here real quick, it could be a problem. If security is at the front door, then everybody in the courthouse is protected, not just the courtroom. We went around to carry on with the history of it. A lot of folks think that courthouse security started when Sherri had killed. Y'all remember, we were already, well, first of all, we already had that after September 11th. But there was a committee met in this room right here, a large committee, and we were working on courthouse security. The next official, Billy, you were here. We went around, that committee and myself, some of the committee members, we all were in different groups. We went to counties, DeSiles and Bowie County, and Foster. We went to Harris County, Harrison County. And Marshall, we went to Tyler, we went to Longview. All of those counties had security. All of them had metal detectors, all the equipment needed to do the job. We've got a large grant that paid for us to have, in addition to our metal detectors, we added x-ray machines for the parts that come through. We put cameras throughout the building. There's some other things, I'm not even going to mention my cul-de-sac. I don't want to mess up the security that we have in the courthouse as well, that's very valuable to us. And we've had shootings on the front steps in Tyler courthouse, people I believe were killed. Coffin County, I believe the same thing, I believe there's anybody that got killed in the parking lot. It can happen. We think, well, when's it going to happen? It don't happen that often. Well, when you, when you need it, you better hope you got it placed. I know it's a pain to have to even come through the bank. They won't just have to stop and take time. But I bet some of the same people who complained about it would be the same people who said, why wasn't it in place when something happens? I plead with you to allow us to use that money for courthouse security. What I want is two deputies to work that front door. What I want is for Tracy to have the equipment either in the back of where she's at, where she's the one monitoring equipment, the three of them, they rotate watching that equipment, the cameras I'm talking about, so that it's not, does not get completely borne from one person, or they're not paying attention to what they're doing at for eight hours. I feel like it's major import. And I plead with you to allow us to continue having the courthouse security.
Misses Jack, questions?
Sheriff. James, I don't have a problem. I think we need security, but you have 42 employees and over a $3 million budget. I don't know why you pick courthouse security to make an issue out of two people or three when you could petty within your department, like the rest of them.
I beg your attention. I have laid off six people on 15%. And if Tracy does not get continued past October 1st, I will have to lay off the seventh person. I've taken a major cut. Now, in addition, just last night-
There's been a lot of taking major cuts.
Yes, sir. Our jobs involve lives. Last night, in D.C., I know, we were assisting a D.C. police officer on a disturbance call where she was shot. And if that deputy had have been there with her, turns out the person that shot her was shot and killed. Okay? What if we had not been there? I can't, on average, I only have four deputies on the street patrolling. When you consider days off, four deputies on the street patrol this county, as large as this county is, okay? That's not very many. Right now, my investigators have been told that they've got probably one to two days a week, are going to have to put on a uniform, leave their investigating duties, and go patrol. Patrol is your heart of your law enforcement. They're the ones that answer your emergency calls. You can't cut them. But I respect what you're saying there, but you can't do it.
My office knows with about health issues, how often we call upon your department for transportation of people to mental health care. And there are times when that bed is only open until a certain time later that day. And we've got to get that person there in a short amount of time, once we go through all the legal steps here. In our last regular court session, I believe we established with one of our district judges, you do not have the option of saying to a district judge, I've cut out some people for transportation because of budget cuts, I can't deliver that prison to you Monday morning for trial.
I'm told to do it, I have to do it. But here's even more than that. And I don't want to knock any of the courthouse officers, okay? It's one thing to wait in line to do business here in the courthouse. Do you want to wait in line if your house is getting broken into? Hmm? I don't think so.
James, how long will this $300,000 last for people? $3 a ticket for a replacement?
I can't tell you exactly how long it'll last. It will definitely last several years, as it stands right now.
I think it will.
Oh, yeah. Easy.
Boy, you can go if your egg-frying machines break.
Sir?
If your egg-frying machines were to come in flat breaks, I mean it-
Awesome. Went the x-ray machine, okay, if we're not using it, if we don't have employees watching, don't let your brakes run off.
No, no, no. Put those employees there and then it breaks.
Oh.
And you're taking all your salary. Their salaries taken the fund out.
Salary's not doing me no good, if we haven't got somebody there to watch it. I mean, yeah. See what I'm saying?
Are there questions or comments?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to. I received an email recently from the chair of our financial committee, and I'll read that for everybody. Can everybody hear me? Loud enough? It says, "Committee and commissioners, despite being on vacation, I have been, this is for everybody, I've been contacted about meeting on Monday for the emergency, and the emergency meeting today." And this was dated July 30th, I believe, on August 19th. As Tom Whitten advised in his letter to the Speaker of the House, our committee likewise advised the Commissioner's Court to be careful about considering accounting gimmicks designed by non-accounters in an effort to avoid spending cuts. As shown in the committee's update number five, both the JP courthouse security fund and the courthouse security fund are already contained within the general fund. The same is true of the female money in updates number six. These three funds are already included in the zero cash balance that started this current budget year, and already included in the $474,000 fund balance that started this current year. These funds are not new money, and I got that in quotes. There's not new money, guys, to spend in an effort to avoid other spending cuts. Using any of these funds to pay salaries, deputies, or whatever will not help the current year budget deficit or slow down the decline in the general fund balance, which will soon be in negative territory. Mike Sam.
Can I ask a question on that? This money in the courthouse security fund can only be used by law for courthouse security. On what I'm told, it's not in the general fund. Mr. Ty, can you answer that?
It is in the general fund, is it not, Don? I mean, it's all in the same bank account, is what we're saying.
No, it's in restricted, it's in a restricted bank account. But I think they're referring to general fund on the audit, am I understanding that right?
It was combined with all the cash to come up to the zero balance in the last dollar.
I think that's what they were trying-
This detector money cannot be used for any purpose in this courthouse or any purpose in this county other than courthouse security, am I correct? That's what the law says.
I think so.
So that's what I can understand why we can't use when we have $300,000, it can only be used for more than years. Why do we have to?
I think Kelly's addressed that earlier. Something happens to those machines, we have to back up and take care of it. Did you say that's what we put the cameras in there?
Machines are no good, nobody monitor.
I think he's addressed that too. You've got 42 employees here. I lost 25% of my staff. I didn't like it, but I did. I didn't lose 25% of my job.
And I'm sorry for everybody. My job deals lives.
I have to find us his way, sir. We have to take care of everybody.
I have to take care of people who want to leave it, not want to, you know, sir.
You know, my question here is, you know, these funds have been available since 2005, 2007, somewhere along that neighborhood, and they've never been addressed until the last couple of weeks. Now, if this was such an issue, how was it not started back in 2011 when we started security down?
From under, it was my understanding, and I believe Mr. Ty, maybe as well, I'm not sure, that ever since September 11th, 2001, the deputies have been paid out of courthouse security money. I didn't know they were not getting paid out of it until the 15% came across. That's when I found out they were not getting paid out of courthouse security fund. I was never told that, when Danny Meyer and Tracy came on full-time, that it got some special incentive.
As I said, we paid the overtime for those deputies that worked overtime out of it.
For all those years, they got paid out of courthouse security. They were actually getting paid time and a half. When I brought in the two that's been working down there, they were only getting straight time. For years, we paid time and a half. I just felt like it was better to have somebody full-time.
I have a copy of a letter from the sheriff to Deborah Land, dated July 13, 2011. Danny Meyer's been hired to Bowie County Sheriff, James Frantz, as a full-time deputy effective July 25, 2011. Please pay him $34,905.12 in salary annually. He will be assigned courthouse security and should be paid from the courthouse security fund. Also, I have a letter dated the same date, no, August 15th, about Tracy Jones. And the last paragraph, she said she will be assigned to courthouse security, should be paid from courthouse security fund. There's nothing new or tricky or sudden going on here about the courthouse security fund. And all of this money hasn't been sitting there the whole time. It accumulates every month from the fees collected by the JPs. And in the month of July, the amount to go into the courthouse security fund out of those fees was $2,000. So there's money coming in. And so hopefully, there won't be a need to have these employees get out of courthouse security fund until it's so depleted that we couldn't pay to have a x-ray machine or a scanner repaired.
From the information that I have received, if we were to try to pay salary out of the courthouse security fund, would accumulate approximately $27,000 a year total.
And that's about what these figures show here.
Okay. Now, that will not cover Tracy's salary, or that will not cover Danny's salary?
No, we're taking it out of the funds that have accumulated over the years, some of which should have been used already and not charged to the sheriff's payroll, but we're not going to worry about backing things up, just moving forward. A great deal of this money that's there should have been used to pay for these two people since then. But the amount of money we have in there now was not the amount of money that showed during this time. So therefore, at some point, they, their salaries were not taken out of courthouse security fund, which is fortunate for us today because now the money is there. And I would recommend, make the motion that we establish positions, you're saying two additional positions, because Tracy's already covered by a previous court order.
Till September 30th. But I would ask, and this is, I guess, a question on, Mr. Carroll. Our budgets go October, October. If the money's paid out of courthouse security fund, does it have to go by the budget, or can it be approved?
No, it has to go October, October. You cannot pledge for one, it's a penalty.
I'm sorry, Carroll, we couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, no. You cannot, if he wants, if the sheriff wants to use courthouse, or request to use courthouse security fund beginning October 1st of this year, he's going to have to come back and ask for it. You can't, you can't pledge in the future.
That's true.
So what he needs, so this covers right now, till September, was Tracy's till September for you. And then, then you could come back again and ask for the next budget, just like you did this last year.
Okay. I believe Tracy's, I'm sorry I couldn't make the last commission court meeting, I had to be at the sheriff's conference, I had a training. But I believe Tracy's was approved and the $3,000 moved to move the equipment back to the sheriff's office. I would like to ask for two armed deputies to work.
So my motion would be to establish two armed deputy positions for courthouse security to be funded out of courthouse security fund pursuant to Article 102.017 Texas Code of Criminal Procedure through September 30th, 2014. Second. Question made by Judge Tracy, seconded by Commissioner Carver. Further discussion?
Reiterate your motion again, please.
Yes. The motion was to establish two armed deputy positions for courthouse security to be funded out of courthouse security funds pursuant to Article 102.017 Texas Code of Criminal Procedure through September 30th, 2014.
Further discussion? Can I ask a legal counsel question? Harold, in this instance, would this not be adding salaries to the budget that are not currently budgeted under our current budget? Would this not have to be declared as an emergency to the budget in order to get its process completed?
Well, considering your past actions and the fact that we are in an emergency situation with money, that would be the best route to go, because this is new positions, and it's my understanding that the court was not establishing any new positions. So, you know, long and short of it, out of an abundance of caution, yes, it should be.
The motion has nothing to do with this year's budget.
Well, I gave my opinion, you can certainly disagree, so I have to give my opinion.
How much is the-
And this motion is establishing two new positions.
How much is the average for those two positions? And then, which was the monitor, like, for the total? I have not got the salary. Danny's was $34,000, Tracy's is less than that. And then, if the other deputy was thirty or more, that'd be $68,000. Law court figured what we, I hate to call names, but Tracy's.
Tracy's making less. I'm going to say we fall to less than $100,000. And that's for a year. So if we did that, the $300,000 we have would last three years, as it stands right now.
You can't pay benefits out of it, can you?
That's include benefit.
Oh.
No, it does not include some sort.
So it won't last three years.
But you not pay benefits out of it?
The motion is for two.
Can you, can you not pay benefits out of it?
I don't know. I think what you have to do, you have to, if you're hiring them out of this fund, everything gets paid out of this fund, except you cannot pay, I mean, benefits is like insurance and retirement, social security. It is not car allowance. Sheriff and I have had that discussion, so I mean, I'm not telling him anything he doesn't know, you know, I've talked about this. But I think you can pay your insurance, your tax, you know, all those kinds of things, but you can't pay, you couldn't pay uniforms, and you couldn't pay car allowance, and you couldn't pay gas.
Can't pay the uniform?
I don't think so. So-
I would have thought that anything-
Well, we'll have to look, but I mean, that would be a fairly limited amount of money, so we're not talking about a lot.
I would take anything that's required for their job in the courthouse, such as equipment, the car allowance.
Well, even equipment, you have to be very careful with equipment, like you can't pay for handheld, there's a case, believe it or not, out there that says you can't pay for those things you clip on, you know, those mics thing. That's not part of it. It's very specific as to what it can be paid for. It's either going to be x-ray machines, conveying systems, handheld metal detectors, walk-through metal detectors, so obviously, if they're, have that, you gotta pay for that. Identific cards and systems, those are our SWAT cards. Electronic locking and surveillance equipment, signage, confiscated weapon inventory and tracking systems, lock exchange alarms or other security devices, purchase or repair bulletproof glass, but like, those handheld mics or walkie-talkies, it's not listed. So there's actually a case that says, we can't pay for that.
For glass, just to bulletproof vest?
Doesn't say bulletproof vest. It's a weird law.
Wow.
Yeah. It doesn't say bulletproof vest, it says these things only, and then, and somebody actually took that out?
I will amend my motion to say that the expense is not to exceed $25,000 for these two months. Would you amend your second?
Yes.
Amendment to motion, amendment to second. That way, gentlemen, you know exactly how much you're authorized as far as the limit between now and September 30th. We'll come back and address this at a time in September. Any further questions?
I've got a comment.
Yes.
I was elected to solve problems. We have a financial problem in this county. This appears to me to be nothing more, in layman's terms, than kicking the can down the road.
This money will run out in how long, Kevin?
Less than three years. All we're doing is postponing in that little one. This is New Boston, Texas, it's not Washington, D.C. We can't just print money down there and print rest like they do up there. We borrow money like they do. Where does that put us? You'll find out this, this October, whenever we get our tax bill, what borrowing money does to all of us. We're going to, I got the numbers, we're going to receive an approximate 32% increase on your taxes, roughly. We've kept late, we don't, we have to live within our means. Is that simple? We can't continue this spending, spending, spending. We've been advised numerous times to cut spending, and that's what this commissioner tends on to do, because I've done it myself in my own recent. I am 100% in favor of security. But right now, we have to cut back, and just, the sheriff, I make do with what we got. The private sector's done that for years. They've been cut, cut, cut. I know when I worked, I know when I worked for State Farm, we went through four of them in less than 10 years, and every time, it just wanted to work on me. And it is what it is. We have to work within our means. And I- We have to work within our means, and I... Well, what's your thoughts on the by-state? We don't have security down there.
We don't own the by-state. We share with, we share with the two cities. There is security in the by-state.
There is security there.
At the front door?
Not, not just, not just that we got here.
These, these citizens right here walk through their front door of the by-state, just like they work through the front door here. And can I, can I, like I said, but...
Sure.
Honestly, I'm 100% in favor of security.
May I make another comment?
Yes.
I just feel like we've got $300,000 that can only be used by law, that's been collected from citizens to pay for courthouse security, can't be used for anything else. Why do we continue to collect that money from citizens if we're not going to use the money? We just want to stop that fund? Can't, the law said we have to clear.
We could change the name of the fund to, the fund to make Bowie County's fund balance look better by not spending it. That's about the only thing I could think of.
I mean, it can't be used for anything else. If it was affected anything else, you can't, you have to understand fully what you're saying.
And this is just a continuation of a request that was made three years ago, and the only reason it wasn't honored was because the money had not been correctly divided up on the JPs. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here talking about this because if it had not been for that error, these two security people at the door that we had there for a long time would be paid out of courthouse security fund.
Until a few weeks ago, I thought they were, as were the officers that were hired working overtime since 2001, and that fund maintained those officers' salary from 2001 until two years ago. So those officers that were working the front door since September 11th, 2001, were being paid out of courthouse security fund.
The overtime was, yes.
That money replenished itself on us to take care of those guys getting paid time and a half.
Of three employees?
No, no, not, no, no, not for them. They would be a fine record for the ones that worked overtime.
Any further questions or comments before I call the questions? Call the questions. Mr. Stone, have you voted?
Don't get me wrong, I am 150% for security, but under these circumstances, I cannot vote for this issue.
You voted yes?
No.
No. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter. Mr. Stone voted no. Mr. Carter votes yes. Judge votes yes. Mr. Britton?
No.
Mr. Blackburn?
I vote no. I wish you the good luck, I have many opinions, but I cannot.
Motion.
I have to protect our citizens.
Motion fails on both of the two.
I'm done.